Please rise for the pledge. I have the Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Bunton?
Here.
Campbell?
Here.
Dempsey?
Here.
Hill?
Here.
Krab?
Here.
Need a motion to excuse Commissioner Menzger?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Menzger.
Okay, announcements, acknowledgements, communications, and reports. This evening, we have a presentation from the Regional Transit Authority on the Grashit Avenue Transit Study. So if you want to say-
Yeah, we have Sarah Binkowski from Parsons Brinkerhoff that's going to provide the presentation. She has a couple of videos at the discretion of the mayor and commission if they would like to watch a couple of short videos. There's a piece that's on the three different routes that are going to be part of the system that she's going to discuss, as well as a second piece that just basically gives you some of the basics on the bus rapid transit service that's being proposed for this project in the metropolitan Detroit area. So if anybody doesn't have any questions, we'll have Sarah get started.
Thank you, Steve. Again, my name is Sarah Binkowski. I'm with Parsons Brinkerhoff. I'm the project manager. I am working directly with the Southeast Michigan RTA. Just to give you a little bit of background about what the Southeast Michigan Regional Transit Authority is, it was formed back in, a couple of years ago, back in 2012 by state legislation. The RTA is a coordinating agency. It currently does not run any transit right now. It is basically an umbrella agency over SMART, DDOT, the Detroit People mover, and the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, which is the RIDE. You'll see that the M1 rail, which they're building the Woodward Streetcar right now in downtown Detroit, they're kind of outside the umbrella right now, but they'll end up coming underneath the umbrella in about seven years after they're up and operational. What the RTA does right now is they're a coordinating agency. It means that they get all these transit providers together, and they ensure that those transit providers are coordinating. They're also working on three corridor projects that are going on right now, as well as a regional transit master plan. We started these projects, these three projects, as well as the master plan, back in May of 2015 where we had several open houses. We had another series of open houses in September of 2015 where we rolled out some of the alternatives for each one of the routes. And then, just earlier, a few months ago, we had open houses in March. We had one in downtown Mount Clemens. And right now, we're coming out to each of the communities along each of the corridors and presenting what we're recommending as far as the alternatives. We've had a lot of input at our meetings, as well as through social media, and we've also gone out on SMART and DDOT routes in order to get surveys to find out where people are coming from and going to as well. And we've gotten a lot of input. Through the input process, we've ended up making basically recommendations, or what we're recommending today is what we've heard from the community, as well as we have a steering committee that was also formed. And on that steering committee is, Steve is on that committee, as well as Brian. We have monthly meetings where we present information about the corridor. And we also have members from SMART and DDOT, Michigan Department of Transportation, as well as the county road commissions. As I mentioned, we are doing three corridor studies right now. One is Michigan Avenue, where we're looking at service from downtown Detroit out to Ann Arbor with connections to the airport. Another study that is a little bit further along is the Woodward Avenue study that goes from downtown Detroit to downtown Pontiac. And then, the study that I'm here about today is the Grashit Avenue study, which goes from downtown Detroit up to M-59, which is just north of us. So what we're looking at is having the final recommendation. It's about 23 miles of roadway between downtown Detroit and M-59. Our final recommendation is going to include the type of transit along the corridor. Right now, we are served by, up here, we're served by SMART. South of Eight Mile, we're served by DDOT. We're looking at what route, and I'll get to that in a few minutes. Station locations, which are about a mile apart, and then what we're calling the running way, which means where the transit is going to run within the roadway. What we did very early on in the study is we looked at different types of transit along the corridor. So we looked at streetcar, we looked at light rail, and we also looked at bus rapid transit. So a lot of people ask what bus rapid transit is. This is a rendering of what it could look like. This is at Mac Avenue, looking downtown. So it would be exclusive transit bus lanes, where you look at what we call priority at traffic signals. It means as the BRT vehicles approaching a traffic signal, if that signal was about to turn red, it would stay green for the BRT vehicle. It would have pre-boarded ticketing. It would have raised platforms, so you would just be able to walk on, you wouldn't have to step up. There would be individual station locations, not a shelter on the side of the road. These would be enclosed stations. We're looking at more frequent service. This is about 10 minutes during the peaks and 15 minutes during the off-peaks. We're looking at 20, or not 24 hours, but seven day a week. We're looking about 18-hour service during the days. And we also have a video, which Steve mentioned. It's online, if you don't want to view it tonight, so you can always go to the RTA website and view that as well. What I like to call BRT is, I like to call it light rail on wheels. It's a lot more, it's less expensive than light rail. It's about a third of the cost of light rail, but you still see the same economic development benefit of light rail. How did we evaluate the different alternatives? We looked at four different, what we call running way alternatives along the corridor. We looked at mixed traffic curb running, which means basically what the SMART buses are doing right now, they're running along the curb. We also looked at dedicated lane curb running, which means we would take one of the outside lanes and convert that to a BRT lane. You would also have vehicles, DDOT and SMART vehicles would use that lane as well, as well as vehicles that want to turn right into a driveway or a street. We looked at two other dedicated lane options. One's called a median running, where we're looking at having a dedicated lane that runs alongside the median. And then, we're also looking at a center running option, which would look at running the BRT option right down the center of the median. When we looked at each of these alternatives, we looked at basically how this would impact the travel time for the BRT vehicle, also how it would impact people that were driving their automobile, what the cost would be for operating and maintaining such a system, what the capital cost would be, which is how much it would cost to build the system. We looked at ridership, which we're still working on. This lets us know how many people would ride the system. Right now, between SMART and DDOT, we have about 14,000 people that ride along Grashit Avenue a day. This is the second highest ridership in the region. It's the top highest ridership for SMART. So it's already a heavily used corridor. We also look at environmental impacts. So we have to look at, are there any impacts to wetlands, any kind of historic resources along this corridor that we really don't have a lot of environmental impacts? And then, we looked at station area evaluations. So we looked at about 26 station locations along the corridor, and we determined which stations really made sense for the route. We also looked at, within downtown Mount Clemens, we looked at two routes. So we had one route that went around downtown Mount Clemens and stayed on Grashit Avenue, and then we had one route that went into downtown Mount Clemens along Main Street. So those were the two routes. We actually started with about four different options through our steering committee. We narrowed it down to these two different options. So we went ahead and looked at how the alternatives compared, especially with the station locations. We looked at population and employment around the stations. We looked at how it connected to the existing transit network, how it connects to the freeways in the area, and how people would be able to access the station locations through park and ride. We also looked at development potential around each of the station locations. And this was one thing that the communities were really interested in, seeing how the stations would be able to redevelop the corridor. What, as I mentioned, what we found is that for every dollar that has been spent on transit in these types of projects, we typically get about $3 to $5 back in economic development. You can even see communities that have higher than that. And then, we also looked at ridership as well. So we gave each of the stations a score, high, medium, or low. Typically, our stations are about a mile apart again. We really were looking at, in Macomb County, we had kind of a couple of stations where we were going to do an either/or. So we were looking at the downtown Roseville at Utica Junction. That was always a definite, but whether or not we did Common Road or 12 Mile Road, that was kind of a question. They were close together. Macomb Mall or 13 Mile Road. So that was really what these alternatives, what we were evaluating. In addition, we looked at, like, down in Detroit, we looked at either having a station at Harper or McLoughlin. And so there was more development potential at McLoughlin. There's a lot of development that's happening right now at McLoughlin, so we ended up going with McLoughlin. Through the last year, we've come to this preferred alternative, especially with comments that we've received from the steering committee. So we are proposing to have 23 miles of BRT service along the five communities, 19 stations along the corridor with buses every 10 to 15 minutes. We are recommending doing what we're calling the median running alternative, which would go on the side of the median. The reason why we were going with that is it's a little bit cheaper of an alternative. We've gotten comments from the Michigan Department of Transportation about not being able to accommodate the indirect left turns along the corridor, as well as community input wanting to preserve the median for landscaping. And there's also been a little bit of concern about the utilities within the median. Within downtown Mount Clemens, what we're really looking at, and I'm going to go back up to the downtown, the two downtown, or the two downtown routes, really the big distinction between the Mount Clemens routes is the route that goes around Mount Clemens, we would end up having two station locations, one on the east side and one on the west side, one for the northbound route and one for the southbound route. We'd end up taking a lane of traffic on Grashit Avenue and having those two station locations. Within downtown Mount Clemens, if the route would go along there, we would have one station locations located within downtown. It'd be a shared station. We were looking at having dedicated BRT lanes. That was some of the input that we had received. And one of the impacts from that is if we had that dedicated lane, or those dedicated lanes, it would end up removing most of the parking within downtown. I think it was about 30 spaces were left within downtown from our initial drawings. So that's kind of the drawback between the two options. The feedback that we've heard from the steering committee and also the public meeting that we had is that we kind of have a split vote between both these options, the pros and cons. At this point, we were going to move both options forward to our kind of next stage that we can continue to discuss. Nothing is ever set in stone with these projects. Even station locations, you could be going into design and a station location could change. So right now, we're just in the narrowing down process. So nothing that you see here is going to be, like, designed in the next few months. I just really want to emphasize that. But if there is a preference by the city commission, please let us know, because we could use that as moving forward as well. So our next steps in the study is, right now, we're trying to finalize what's called the locally preferred alternative. We are writing a report right now, which will have all the information that you ever wanted about travel times and impacts, if you really want to get into nitty-gritty of numbers. The RTA, we expect to take this to the RT board later this week for presentation, and then eventual adoption. And then, we end up taking it to the Federal Transit Agency, where they'll review it, and then they'll end up approving it, and then we can end up going into the next phase. And the next phase of the project is the environmental phase. So that's quick and dirty. I do have two videos, if you'd like to see them. There's a couple visualizations in there as well. Any questions?
How long are the videos?
They're about three minutes each. We're rolling. Any questions before I roll?
Six minutes, come on.
Okay. This is just going over what BRT is and what some of the key features are for BRT. So for the corridor, we were looking at several park and ride stations along the corridor. One of them would be at M-59. We were looking at one at Metropolitan Parkway, one near Macomb Mall, and one down by I-94, and also one at Eight Mile. This shows an illustration of just some of the, oh, I'm starting to, what's your goodie day? So this is just showing you some examples of station locations. Again, we're looking at enclosed stations. The other video will show you what the rendering is of kind of ordinary station locations. So it's going to be heated in your commission.
Can you talk into the mic? Thank you.
And then, this also shows that there's going to be real-time displays at all the stations to let you know when the BRT will be coming, the next up BRT vehicle. Also, what the vehicles would have, so this is showing a vehicle that you can bring your bike onboard. Right now, we haven't done any sort of vehicle selection yet, but you can basically, through public input, we're going to end up going out and asking people what they would like to see. We're looking at having Wi-Fi on all of the vehicles. It will be easy for those that are disabled to be able to get onto the BRT vehicle, is basically just you roll on, and then you'll be able to click in. Again, we're looking at dedicated lanes as well, and this is in order for it to be reliable along the corridor. It doesn't, the BRT vehicle doesn't end up getting stopped by any kind of vehicle, or any kind of traffic congestion. And then, we are also reliable because we have the traffic signal priority. BRT has really become huge in the last 10 years. Those are some of the examples. If you end up going to Cleveland, they have a really great BRT system, and that has, if you do end up going there, that's the system that we're really trying to strive for. They've ended up having, I think about, they're up to like $4 billion in economic development So this is the commuter rail line, which is on top in blue, and then the bottom is the BRT. So the Michigan Avenue study is recommending a BRT that goes from Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor, and then another BRT line that goes from downtown, or the Detroit Metro Airport to downtown Detroit. The commuter rail would go from downtown Ann Arbor to Detroit up in the new center area where the Amtrak station is. So these are some visualizations of what the corridor could look like. Again, these are just conceptual at this point. This is an example of the commuter rail in downtown Dearborn. This shows a good example of the type of vehicle that we're looking at. We're looking at what's called an articulated vehicle, so it's kind of an extra-long vehicle. You might have seen some of these along Grashit Avenue already. SMART has some of these and DDOT as well.
Well, Sarah had mentioned the opportunity to do a tour of the Cleveland line. I did have the opportunity to do that when I was with SMART, and that's something that if they do arrange that for the Grashit line folks, that I think would be very reliable, very worthwhile for people to get a chance to see what a BRT system looks like, because it is definitely different than anything that we have in the area. So hopefully, that's something that gets put together. If they do it, I encourage anybody that's interested from the commission to take a trip out to Cleveland and check it out, because it was very impressive and very eye-opening for the people that attended on the Woodward Avenue project. So any questions?
This is going to be on the ballot in November.
Yes, so it will be on the ballot in November. They're still determining the amount that will be on the ballot. And the regional-
So you don't have any information about how much it would affect taxpayers? Is it going to be based on property values, or what will it be based on?
The regional master plan is expecting to have some public meetings coming out in May, and they will have more information about it. So I don't want to speculate and give any kind of wrong information about it.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Give you a few minutes to. Oh, okay.
Yeah, she did shut it down, I think.
Is it shutting down? It's blinding.
Just going to take a second.
Do we have any other announcements or acknowledgements?
Just one meeting. The Historic District Commission will meet on Tuesday, April 26, at 7:00 PM here at City Hall.
Okay, anyone else? Adoption of the agenda? I move to adopt the agenda as presented.
Actually, sorry, I was stepping out to handle something there. I do have something that I wanted to ask that we pull for this week. It's 9B, the approval of the license agreement. We had hoped to have the full give and take between the city and the county on the language happened before tonight. Unfortunately, that didn't happen, and there's a couple of questions that Mike and I haven't had a chance, Mike, our, Mike Murray, our city attorney, hasn't had a chance to really go over and communicate with me about. So at this point in time, I'm asking to hold that, or pull it from the agenda, and we'll cover it at the next business meeting on May 2.
Okay. I move to adopt the agenda as amended. Support? Roll call.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Krab?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Okay, this is public participation time. This is the time that you may address this body. All we ask is that you give us your name, residential address, and that you adhere to our three-minute rule. So the mic is open. One, two, three. Someone. Laura, excuse me. Laura Fournier, 70 Lodwick Street, Mount Clemens. I would like an update on the sidewalk prob, the sidewalk issue and what's being done. Noticed a lot of sidewalks marked along Church Street, but not many anywhere else. I just bought a property, or in the process of buying a property, in Queen and Leslie, something that I've talked to this commission before about, and one of the, that house is literally fences laying down, the gutters are falling off, the basement, if you got in it, was a total disaster. It's probably a tear-down again, which, not something we really enjoy doing, but there's not much choice there. I know that the city inspectors have been out there many times, as well as blatant enforcement. But on that sidewalk around the house, they did fix one flag there last fall, and that was a very bad flag. I've fallen there personally. But they didn't fix the corner, which is not handicap accessible, and has a huge space between the curb and the actual sidewalk. So if you were on a bike or a wheelchair, in my husband's case, and you came down there and hit that curb, you'd fly. And so I don't know why that wasn't fixed when the sidewalk was fixed, but it wasn't. And I also want to know if that slated as a non-handicap corner to be fixed. Thank you. Thank you.
Gloria Haller, 260 Cass. Well, Commissioner Hill is my new BFF. You asked about the financing on the RTA. Thank you. You know, this whole thing, anything I've ever heard about it, it's all boilerplate and brainwashing. They give you so much information, you don't have time to think and analyze about, how's this going to be paid for? It kind of strikes me as a project that is designed to keep people employed, whether or not it's going to benefit us. And let everybody know, when it comes to voting on that in November, vote no, or your vote and your property tax is going up again, for minimal benefit compared to cost. We've gotten along years without it. Mount Clemens is too small to have some, do you know what that's going to do on Monday motion? I mean, this is stupid. No. Now, that being said again, thank you to Commissioner Hill for bringing up the fact that, how are you all going to pay for this? She had to ask. Thank you. Item 9E. Vote no until you consider this. I've asked several times about working the elections, and the last time I asked was two months ago. And I was told, well, since we have technology, there's two less jobs at each precinct. So that means each precinct has a couple people that are available but aren't used, apparently. And then, we come along with 9-whatever this is. Oh, goodness. Got to have more money. Well, actually, what it sounds like is some people that are working would like to continue working where they have been, but they want more money. Well, in this economy, you can't have everything. You can have where you want to work, but not what you want to work for. So you can choose to follow the job or follow the money. But I'm telling you right now, this is another abuse and misuse of those taxes that were stolen from the taxpayers to begin with. Remember all those lies and misrepresentations we were fed? Well, here would be another case of, oh, we've got money, let's spend it. Really? And if you're going to tell me, don't worry about it, it's reimbursed. Really? My shorts are taxes. This pocket is city. Okay, you're telling me part of that isn't going to come out of city taxes? Where's it going to come from? The county taxes? The state taxes? The federal? It's still taxes, folks, that don't need to be spent, because I was told myself less than two months ago, she's got more people than she has jobs. Hello? No.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Rick, my name's Rick Addens. I reside at 79 Church Street, where the Big Water main break is. It ran for roughly 30- It ran for roughly 32 hours straight. Piles and piles of dirt out in the street. I don't know if there's any idea that the road's going to get fixed, but the delamination underneath the road, it's got to be huge cavities. Then it broke again once they fixed it, which is terrible, and it was shooting 30 feet in the air. I was the only unfortunate one. 30 inches of water in my basement, it just destroyed everything. I guess my biggest question is, is there any plan or is there going to be money or thought to check the road out? Because it's going to collapse. There's no way for it to run that long without just yards and yards of dirt just running down the street. I probably have two inches of dirt in my whole basement right now. That's my biggest thing. I had to make pitch report, my daughter's a sheriff, and then I did file a claim with the city for insurance or something like that.
If I can just answer that real quickly. The last time I had a conversation about what's going to happen with that road was about an hour and a half before the commission meeting, so we're actively looking at what we're going to do to make sure that the road's not compromised, and if it is compromised, what we're going to do about it. So that is something that we discussed actively today, and we'll continue to discuss in the coming weeks here until we can come up with, you know, an idea of what the issue is, what we're going to do about it, and those kinds of things. So it's on our mind, and we're going to take a look at it and get it taken care of as best we can.
That's great. I really don't understand why mine backed up, and it just huge amounts of pressure.
I saw that.
Yeah, I can't believe it, but the guys that worked out there...
And I did see your insurance claim information getting passed to the right people today, so that's being actively processed.
And your utility guys out there working, they just were nonstop. They did a great job.
That's who I was meeting with today. So, yeah, I wanted to give kudos to them. Very rough night last night. I was on the phone with them quite a bit yesterday, and they're going to have another rough night tonight with the added break that's happening today. So it's going to be a big demand on them, and we appreciate all their efforts to get that under control.
Thank you.
Wasn't that road also slated this year for moving?
Yeah, I was going to mention that. That is a project that's scheduled for this year, section of church, so it's kind of a good combination of circumstance here. We're going to be actively looking at the road anyway, so it's going to be addressed and looked at.
Thank you.
Christine Vernier, 65 Lodewick. Last week, there was a young man in front of my house on the corner of Lodewick and Church, and he was marking the sidewalks near the ramp to the road with some pink arrows. And so, of course, I asked him what he was doing, and he said, in July, and this might be related to you, there's a grant. I said, did the county or city get the grant? And he said, the city. And they're going to be doing some work on the roads on Church Street, and they're also doing the ramps going down on the corners for the handicap people. But the only thing I questioned was, he went back so far that there's, this is all new sidewalk within the last two, three years, so it's in perfect condition. And I said, do you really have to go back that far? And from what I understand, I talked to someone again today, they said, you might know, or someone here might know, that they have to have it go down gradually, so they have to take up quite a bit of the new sidewalks. And so I just wanted to verify that that's true. And they said that there are codes they have to follow, so they go back quite a bit.
That's correct. There's a certain requirement that we do when we have those kinds of changes take place, and that's all part of the project.
Okay. But they also said something about the roads, so I don't know if that's connected that grant?
It is. It is. It's all one grant.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Danielle Tierpoff, 54 Dorothia. I know that the street cleaner comes regularly through the neighborhoods, but the kind of concern that I have is, last time they came through, they did the middle of the street, but I don't know why they don't go close enough to the curb. On Dorothia where I live, it was just, it looked like a mess in front of some of the houses. And I don't think people should have to be cleaning up with the street cleaners should be doing. There'd been times, everything was just nice and neat, but last few times, it just was a mess round over by the sewers and the curbs. I know they get paid to do their jobs, but I think that they need to do a better job. I don't know if it's the issue because they have too many in a one-day period of time or if they're just plain goofing off, but I hope something's done about it.
Thank you.
Hello, Deputy Vito's Fellas, 205 North Grashit. I wanted to thank Commissioner Hill for a question regarding the vote on the ballot for the transit bus. I know it's very important. The only comment I had were my businesses on North Grashit. I watch buses go up and down Grashit all day long, and I've been doing it for 30-some years. I'll be honest with you, I have never, ever seen one single bus that's half-full. Normally, they have five to 10 passengers at the most. And the only question that I have, and I know she probably can't answer it, if we are going to have it on the ballot, I would hope that they're fair to the taxpayers, and is that going to be an exemption for the SMART tax that we passed a few years ago that's a long-term tax? Or are we going to be taxed for the rapid transit and the SMART? And I don't know if somebody can answer that. I would just like it to be fair to the voters, especially the senior citizens. They're not approving something that's already in place, and this would be a duplicate service. So hopefully that's a fair question, okay? Thank you.
We'll see. Can you answer now?
Sure.
I guess we can answer it now.
That would be a separate tax issue. The SMART operating millage is for operating SMART service. That would be a separate millage because it's a separate system, separate construction, separate operation.
We would basically have two bus services.
Two bus services, two separate operating millages, correct.
Well, they prompted another question, I can see.
Yes, per purposed on what Vito has...
We have your name?
Ruthie Stevenson, 69 Bain Street. Per purposed on what Vito has stated, it stops at Hall Road. Majority of the traffic, once it leaves Mount Clemens, goes to 23 Mile Road. So SMART bus will be running still, and this venue will only still stop at Hall Road. You know, I know you can't answer that question now.
Separate service, SMART would continue to operate service. There might be changes to SMART service. I can't speak to exactly anything that would happen, but SMART service would continue to operate, yes.
Can I just say, there was an article in the Detroit News this past weekend on this system, so if anybody wants more information, there was quite a detail on this article. So go to the Detroit News and pull up that article and read it. I think that might answer some of the questions. There's still a lot of questions that have to be answered, and I think they're working those out. So, but it was a good article, so you should go and take a look at that. You may. I'll take the privilege of...
She was here for a presentation.
I'll be really quick, too. One thing to mention about the RTA is that this is a regional system, that we're looking at improving regional service. SMART is providing local service, so they're not, we're not looking at this as having duplicate service. We're looking at this as being additional service to be able to get people to locations within the regional, within the region easier.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Administrative responses to issues and questions raised during previous meeting? Mr. Brown?
Yes, Your Honor, I did not have anything originally, but I did want to add something in at the 11th hour here. The city commission vacancy that was created with the resignation of Gary Blash, the deadline for filing as a candidate for that election in August is tomorrow, Tuesday, April 19th, at the close of business at 4:00 PM, actually. So if you want to make yourself a candidate for that opening on the city commission that will be voted on at the August election, the deadline is tomorrow, you need to have your paperwork into the city clerk's office by 4:00 PM on April 19th.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve the minutes from previous meetings?
I move to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay, were there any changes to the minutes or questions? Roque.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Okay, general business, 9E. The adoption of a resolution authorizing issuance of a general obligation limited tax refunding bond, series 2016.
Move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing issuance of general obligation limited tax refunding bond, series 2016.
Second.
City administration has determined that the city can realize savings by refunding parking improvement project bonds issued in 2003. In evaluating this opportunity, we have consulted with bond counsel at Miller Canfield, Paddock &amp; Stone, PLC, and also with the firm of Hutchinson, Shockey, Early &amp; Company as placement agent for the refunding bonds. The resolution that was crafted by Miller Canfield has three primary highlights. The 2003 parking bonds are to be refunded through a city bond issue. The new bonds will likely be placed with a bank, but the resolution does allow for the bonds to be sold through an underwriter if necessary. And then third, the city manager and/or finance director are authorized to proceed or not based on whether adequate savings are ultimately achieved when the bonds are issued or ready to be issued. In other words, this resolution would be the only action required of the city commission. This bond refunding will not extend payments beyond the original date of July 1st, 2023, and furthermore, this refunding is expected to generate net savings of approximately $150,000 over the remaining life of the bond, subject to the market conditions at the time of issuance. There is a memo attached from finance director Linda Kunith that provides a little bit more information, and city administration is recommending the authorization of this bond refunding in order to realize net savings to the city through lower debt service payments. And we do have the aforementioned consultants that are here tonight to answer any questions that any of you might have on any information that was provided in the resolution or the memo from Linda Kunith or in the agenda item explanation from me. And we will have Jeff Aronoff of Miller Canfield, who drafted the resolution that's before you this evening, as well as Mike Gormley from Hutchinson, Shockey, Early Company as well. They're ready to answer any questions that you might have if there are any questions. The bottom line on this is, this is an opportunity to realize some net savings to the city that will be beneficial to our budget picture and our ability to perhaps do some additional improvements in the parking system in the future if we do go through this refunding and save the funds that are expected to be saved. Before we get started, there's a net present value of savings that's sort of a target for making it a worthwhile bond refunding. That figure is at 3%. The projections from Mr. Gormley peg this at about 6%. So this is a pretty advantageous opportunity for us to save some serious money here over the life of the bonds.
Commissioner Hill?
I'm assuming that this is a similar thing to refinancing your mortgage to get a lower interest rate?
Absolutely.
Okay.
A little bit more complicated.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that. My question is, when you talk about new bonds, does that mean there will be a series of bonds and you start paying off these bonds? Like, is it like having tickets in a coupon book that you pay off?
You know, interestingly, I'm Jeff Aronoff, bond counsel. In my office, I have a bond on the wall, a 100-year-old railroad bond, and it's no good, but it does have literally coupons that you tear off. In theory, it's the same thing, but it's all done sort of on a more virtual, computerized basis. I think one of the things that differentiates a bond from a loan is, a loan is one instrument that you're just paying amortization on, right? A bond has separate maturities, and each one of those is sort of its own payment, its own little miniature loan. Now, in the case of a transaction that is underwritten, that is, one big firm, it could be a Hutchinson, Shockey, or a similar firm pays for all the bonds, and then they turn around and sell it on the broad bond market, but the sort of international exchange. Individual investors or institutions can buy individual maturities. It can be broken up that way. So that's the difference between a bond and a traditional loan. In this case, in theory, the instrument's built the same way, there's pieces of it. But what's going to happen in practice is, the city is going to place it most likely with a local bank, and they're going to own all of those maturities from either a local bank or just a single purchaser, a single institution, rather than it being sold on a broad market. So even though there are individual, what we call coupons, the fact is, it's going to behave a little bit more like just a regular loan. Does that make sense to answer the question?
Yeah, I think so.
I mean, I know that's sort of what people, what people think of as the difference between a bond and a loan, is there are individual maturities that are sort of separate from one another, rather than one loan that gets paid down.
Is it coupon or coupon?
Well, tomato, tomato.
I have a question, but I think it's more for Linda. The savings, since this is a enterprise fund, the parking, will that savings go back into the enterprise fund, or will it go into the general fund? Because it's the full faith of the city that we're pledging, or we have pledged to the bond, so I'm a little confused on where we would put it.
And it has to stay with the...
Enterprise.
So it'll stay with the auto parking.
Okay, okay. That makes sense, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Because that's where the loan is, that's where we're going to pay it off, so it stays with that.
If there's work to be done in the parking system, replacing of equipment, paving of parking lots, those kinds of things, do you allow us to do those kinds of things?
Has the general fund been contributing to the parking fund at all?
Not this year.
Not this year?
And not planned for next year.
Okay. It did last year, though.
Actually, it was in 2014 was the last year.
I was just thinking, is there anything we can recoup back, you know, into the general fund from this to offset? But if it's 2014, it's a little further back, but I thought if it was last year, maybe we could.
Right.
Okay.
I have one more question.
Commissioner Hill?
From what I read here, it sounds like you negotiate this, and it will only be done if the city can save significant money.
Correct. That's the purpose of the resolution being drafted, the way that it was by Mr. Aronoff, is that if the transaction becomes non-advantageous or not advantageous enough for the city, we'd have the leeway to not proceed. So the way he's written it is to allow Linda Kunith and I to make a decision based on, we were forecasting that we were going to get an interest rate in this range. If it's not within that range, if the savings aren't going to be sufficient to cover the costs of issuance, or if it's not going to be adequate to really make it worthwhile, we'd have the discretion not to make a move and to not proceed with the issuance. So, yes, the way it's written was to allow that kind of flexibility so that we don't have to bring it back to you if things go south, so to speak, and it doesn't turn out the way that we expected. We don't anticipate that being the case at all. I fully expect that we'll proceed.
Commissioner Bunton? You're all by yourself over there.
Isolated, what can I say?
What is the projected savings? I think we, I may have read that the bonding that we're looking for would be half the bond that is already in place, half the interest rate of the bonds already in place? Is that about right? And then, how much would that save us?
Hi, I'm Mike Gormley with Hutch Shockey. What we're anticipating right now is there's seven years remaining on the outstanding bonds. They end in 2023. So I think the city manager and the city finance director did an excellent job in writing their memos. We're anticipating right now at a 2.5% interest rate that we're estimating in today's market. It'd be roughly between $20,000 and $25,000 annually savings net to the city or to the parking system. Gross savings is about $165,000. When you present value that back, it's about $150,000, and that's net present value after all the costs are paid to actually execute the transaction. So that is a net-net figure that we're talking about.
And as a follow-up, are the units themselves going to sell for about $1,000? And is that available to the public, or is it just going to go through a bond issue?
Well, we're anticipating right now is essentially a bank placement, selling it non-rated, even though the city has ratings in the A category, without an official statement, which would be required, without what's called continuing disclosure, and selling it to a sophisticated financial institution, buying it in that manner, and is able to buy it in that manner and hold it for their own portfolio until it matures. If we had to go the other route and sold it to individuals, we would be required to do an official statement, which is costly. We would have to at least get one bond rating, so our costs would go up. Even though it's built into the resolution, which is nice to have the flexibility, I don't think it's going to be advantageous to go that route. I think we've got some flexibility. If we don't get the 2.5% interest rate and we get 2 and 3/4, I still think that there's going to be good savings, as Mr. Brown said, that, you know, 3% is pretty much the industry standard, net present value savings. So if we're at roughly 6%, we do have some leeway in there relative to it, but we're trying to get to the market as quickly as can be and call the bonds out July 1st, the old bonds, and pay those off, and then have the new bonds in place.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Roque, please.
Hill.
Yes.
Kraut.
Yes.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Okay, 9E, request additional compensation for the election workers. Need a motion?
Move to approve the requested, the request to increase the fees for election inspectors from 125 to 140 per day, and election chairperson from 150 to 175 per day, effective July 1, 2016.
Support.
Election workers are paid a daily fee for working on Election Day. Currently, election workers are paid $125 for the day, and election chairpersons are paid $150. This pay rate has not changed in nearly 15 years. In the past, election workers were required to be qualified and registered elector of the city in which they worked an election. This was later changed to encompass the county, but in 2014, the state changed the requirement to include the entire state, so that many, any resident of the state who is registered to vote can work at any precinct within the state of Michigan. As a result, many residents who have regularly worked elections, as well as prospective workers who live in the city, are working for other jurisdictions who offer a higher fee. This has limited our ability to hire qualified election workers in Mount Clemens. I'm therefore requesting, city clerk, that is, requesting the city commission consider an increase in election worker pay for election inspectors from 125 to 140 per day, and for election chairpersons from 150 to 175 per day. This proposed increase would equate to an additional $750 per election. And she would also like to point out, the city is reimbursed for election costs from the state for all state and federal elections, and 100% of election worker pay is included in this reimbursement.
Okay. Questions, comments? Seeing none, roll call. Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Okay, 9F, approve purchase and payment of invoices. Need a motion?
I move to approve purchases and payment of invoices as presented.
Support. Are there any questions? No? Seeing none?
I do have a question.
Commissioner Hill?
On the replacement of the floor for the fire department, the bids on that, I mean, we accepted the low bid, but it was so much lower that I was wondering if it's going to be really a good job or not.
Yeah, those kinds of concerns are relevant and worthwhile. It was the opinion of the procurement function that we would go ahead and proceed with awarding the bid as it was recommended with the lowest bidder. If there ends up being issues on it, we'll have to proceed from there. But I do understand the disparity in cost is pretty huge.
Yeah.
And it does cause concern, but we are advocating to proceed with the recommendation that was put before you.
I hope we don't see any overrides.
Is there any warranty or guarantee when they do their work? Is that included in here?
Well, it's a little bit of specialized work, I guess, is how I would put it. It's some repairs to grading on the floor is essentially what's being done, I believe, is the, pretty much the full scope of the work. And it's very possible that it's just these people are very familiar with the work and that therefore they've got a better understanding of what the costs are than somebody who's a general concrete contractor that might not have a good understanding of the expenses that would be associated with it. I'm going to take the optimistic view of that and hope that it's going to work out just fine, but we'll see.
Yeah, I was, isn't this other group, Luigi, isn't that the group that does a lot of work for the city?
Yeah, that's my point. They're the general cement contractor for the city, and this is a little bit of a specialized work area. You know, it's a little bit off the beaten path, it's just not straight concrete work, so I'm guessing that's maybe partially why there's a big discrepancy, at least I hope that's why. Greater understanding of the job at hand.
Yeah, yeah, I just don't want to have to redo it again in a year or something.
That's scary. Did we, and we've worked with them before? I mean, is that, did we check reference? I mean...
Yeah, I mean, I have the utmost confidence in the person that performs our procurement function here in the city, and I'm pretty confident because of that.
If I may, that, this same group performed the roof replacement at the train depot site, and they did a great job on that.
All right. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Hill?
Yes.
Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda as proposed.
Support.
Roll call, please. Crowe?
Yes.
Bunton?
Yes.
Campbell?
Yes.
Dempsey?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
All right, city manager's report.
So, a couple items for this commission meeting's report from the city manager's office. First off, we have the Taxpayers for Michigan Constitutional Government, the TMCG, as they're affectionately known. The city is an active participant in the Macomb area communities for regional opportunities, otherwise known as MACRO. TMCG is a recent initiative that has come up through MACRO. This is a group that was formed to challenge the state on the minimum local government support as established by the state constitution. There is a minimum percentage of funding that is to be provided to local governments under Headley. Further guidelines exist about what can and cannot be included by the state in determining whether they meet the requirements that are called for by the Headley requirements. TMCG is preparing a legal challenge that asserts the state does include items they cannot include in their calculations of local support payments. And there's an additional piece of information that was provided with the agenda here that was put out for your benefit by the Taxpayers for Michigan Constitutional Government. As an example, the state counts payments to local governments to perform obligations of the state, such as maintenance along state trunk lines, in their calculation of local government support. So in other words, the state of Michigan has work that they can't do or are not inclined to do. They ask local governments to do that for a fee, and then they basically credit themselves for giving money away to local municipalities, when in fact, they were contracting with local municipalities to do work that they did not want to do. So there are things that they're counting as local support, which is inappropriate in the minds of TMCG and of like-minded people in city government and other municipal governments, such as yourselves, across the state and across the region. The TMCG estimates this revenue shortfall from these and other actions by the state at over $3 billion annually. These are dollars that could have supported local governments like the city of Mount Clemens in providing critical services that everybody relies on in the cities that people reside in. Public safety services, picking up up trash, maintenance of roads, maintenance of parks, a variety of things. Because we don't get that money, we can't do the work that we need to do to the extent that we need to do it. They feel that there should be funding at the proper levels and amounts in the future, and because of that, TMCG, the taxpayers for municipal, Michigan Constitutional Government, sorry, has asked local communities to support this legal challenge by contributing $1,500 to a fund to cover expert testimony and other legal costs. And I wanted to let you know that it's my plan to submit a $1,500 payment to support this worthwhile activity, and hopefully let the state know that they can't continue that practice and bring some additional revenue to cities like Mount Clemens, so we can continue to do work and continue to do it at a higher level. So that's one item. The website update. We've added and shifted a variety of new and existing content related to stormwater on our website. We've created a new page entitled Environmental and Stormwater under Services, and shifted contents from the utilities page to this new page, plus added a variety of new informational resources as well. We've also added one of the new links from this page, Household Hazardous Waste Information, or HHW Information, to the Helpful Links page under Government. The intent here is to make this important information more obvious and readily available to our users of the website. Next item, volunteerism. The mayor had an important message in our April, May, June Clementines Newsletter regarding volunteerism. She points out that April is National Volunteer Month, and encouraged citizens in Mount Clemens to volunteer for a board or committee assignment. I ask that you take a look at the Clementines Newsletter. Everybody receives one that lives in town, and you can see in this newsletter that important information, and consider visiting the city website at cityofmountclemens.com for more information on how to get involved with your city. You can find an application under Government slash Boards and Committees on the website, and put in your information, and the mayor and commission would be happy to act on additional citizen interest in volunteering for those kind of assignments. The other thing related to the Clementines Newsletter is a budget message that was put into the Clementines Newsletter. Your mayor and commission had asked that city administration add this new item to the newsletter to provide residents and others with important information on how Mount Clemens is putting your tax dollars to work. The first appearance of that was in this most recent edition of the Clementines Newsletter, and I ask if you're interested to please let me know what you think of the content by contacting me at City Hall, or by sending an email to me at sbrown@cityofmountclemens.com. And then the last item I'm going to defer on, because I see that Commissioner Button has a bunch of information in front of him this evening on how to handle unused prescription drug, drugs that you might have in your home. So I'm going to rely on Commissioner Button to do a fantastic job in handling that, and I'll defer my comments for him.
Questions for the city manager? Commissioner Campbell?
Two things. One, regarding the street sweeping, I had several people ask me, in one block, there were seven cars on the street, and so therefore, the street sweeper couldn't, had to go around them, so half the block didn't get swept. Is there ever, what's the plan to, they want to know if they're going to be coming back,[1456.53] Is there ever, what's the plan to, they wanna know if they're gonna be coming back, and if there's ever gonna be a plan put in place so people can be warned to get their cars off the street. And then the second one is, uh, the water department that was taking care of the, uh, break over on Church Street, they had their hands full, and they were working very hard, so, congratulations to them.
Thank you. Commissioner Hill.
Uh, well, I hope everybody's had a chance to get out and enjoy this lovely weather that we've been having. It's been beautiful, I'm sure it won't stay like this, but we should enjoy it while it lasts. Just to piggyback on what Mayor Dempsey and, um, city manager Steve Brown said, uh, about na- April being National Volunteer Month, um, I just want to echo the importance of volunteering and urge our residents to think about what a difference it can make to our city. Many of our, the most positive things that happen in our community are because of the contributions of people who volunteer for our committees and commissions. There are also many important decisions made by various boards, commissions, and committees of the city. Think about what is important to you in our city, and consider volunteering for a committee or board that deals with those decisions. To paraphrase what President John Kennedy said, ask not only what your community can do for you, ask what you can do for your community. I also want to express thanks to the many people who are already volunteering. You may feel like what you're doing is not very important or isn't appreciated, but your efforts make a big difference to the quality of life and the functioning of our city. Uh, next, I want to call attention to an event that will happen on Sunday, May 1st, the annual Crop Walk. This event raises funds to deal with hunger and poverty right here in Mount Clemens throughout the United States and throughout the world. Uh, first of all, on the Sunday of the event, there will be groups of people from surrounding air, from the surrounding areas, walking on a route, uh, through the downtown area of the city of Mount Clemens. If you see them, please cheer them on. Also, consider sponsoring one of the walkers or walking yourself. To sign up or to make a donation online, go to www.crop-hungerwalk.org/MountClemensMichigan. Um, and that's it for tonight, have a good evening and a great week.
Thank you. Commissioner Krab.
Um, I wanna first, um, clarify that the annual Crop Walk is C-R-O-P, and not, nothing to do with the crop family.
Oh, I never thought of that.
Uh, we get that a lot. Um, I'm also looking forward to spring happening, um, in the city, and, um, looking forward to the farmer's market opening May 7th, and, um, the event on May 1st sponsored by the DDA, and, um, it's an opportunity for residents to come into the downtown and, um, work with the businesses and just community people who are interested in sprucing up downtown so that it's ready for all of the great events that are going to be happening. Um, 11:00 AM, Mickey?
Yes.
Okay, so 11:00 AM, and meet by the fountain stage, right?
Lunch will be served by Chantel's.
Oh, even better. Lunch will be served, if you didn't catch that, by Chantel's. Um, thank you to everyone who attended my coffee talks this week, um, April 12th, uh, sorry, last week, April 12th and April 16th, there were a lot of new faces, which was exciting. Um, I appreciate the time commitment that that takes, and, um, all the feedback that we, that we, um, shared, and that, that was really helpful. Um, I was wondering, um, if there is a possible commissioner notification, um, that we could do for events like major water main breaks. Um, it just would be helpful to know about those things. Um, and I also thought that I had a lot of calls, um, from no, residents who had questions about that, you know, where are we under boil water, where are we under that kinda thing, so, um, I thought maybe we should also think about a social media presence or a citizen notification system that could help with those questions, just to be proactive so that way rumors don't get started. Um, there were things on social media that were happening, and you just wanna nip that in the bud.
If I can real quickly.
Yep.
Uh, I was on the Ohio Turnpike driving back when I was on the phone about 15 times already, um, and I was kinda getting uncomfortable with how much time I was spending on the phone, um, so I did consider doing that, but I, I really didn't feel like I could spend, you know, the, the, I was getting back at pretty late hour already, um, and that's why that, that didn't get handled. I do like this, uh, this, I do apologize for the first, uh, first lack of notice, and then the second item, um, is certainly something that we can take a look at, and, uh, it's something that actually you might be hearing something on shortly based on a meeting that I have tomorrow morning, so...
Good, great. Um, and I also wanted to extend a huge thank you to the DPW, who of course are, had a long Sunday, a long Monday, and it sounds like a long Tuesday, so, so thank you very much. Please, uh, Mr. Wood, if you could pass that along, so, uh, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Bunton.
Okay, um, Earth Day is celebrated on April 22nd each year to demonstrate support for environmental protection. It was started in 1970 and is celebrated in 193 countries, so, Happy Earth Day as it comes. Drug Take Back. The Mount Clemens Community Coalition for Youth and Families will be conducting its fifth Drug Take Back Day Saturday, April 20, uh, April 30th, uh, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at Wilson Gym located at 58 South Wilson here in Mount Clemens. This, uh, event is held in conjunction with the Drug Enforcement Administration's National Drug Take Back Day. Communities across the country are making an effort to properly dispose of unused or outdated prescription drugs before they get into the hands of unauthorized users, hmm, and before they are flushed down the toilet or put into the waste disposal system to pollute our economic system, or ecosystem, I'm sorry. Uh, please, help us reach our goal of collecting 20 pounds of drugs in our effort to save our planet and save the lives of those that live on it. I have flyers here, and if any of you would like to distribute those in your neighborhood, we'd make it available to you, you know, the information as to where to go and how to go about it, and, uh, please, spread the word, neighborhood or wherever, just, uh, you know, even your religious places, churches, et cetera, spread the word so that we can get this done. Um, Passover, uh, April 23rd is the first day of the Jewish holiday of Passover, beginning at sundown the day before. Uh, for those who celebrate this holiday, I wish you well. Uh, April 29th is Arbor Day. Uh, this is a day dedicated annually to the public planting of trees. This is essential to replenish our atmosphere, it's, uh, good for beautification and preventing soil erosion on our planet. Macomb County Office of Senior Services. I would like to make the public aware of some of the services offered by, uh, Macomb County Senior Citizens, or the service, uh, for, uh, first of all, if you are 60 years or older and live in Macomb County, you can take advantage of the many services offered by Macomb County Office of Senior Services. Uh, they have programs to help with ramps for those disabled, grab bars, uh, transfer benches, handheld showerheads, toilet, uh, assist rails, bath chairs, and other assists for home injury and elderly assistance. They have meals on wheels, they have utility shut-off assistance. Uh, they provide, uh, chore services such as snow removal, lawn care, gutter cleaning, odd maintenance jobs such as plumbing and light electrical, uh, changing storm screens, installing smoke alarms, and others. There are many other services they provide, and you may find out about them by calling Macomb County Community Service Agency at 586-469-5228. That's 469-5228. They will send someone to your home to evaluate what services you are eligible to participate in. I encourage you to take advantage of these services because if you don't, the government will stop funding them, so, spread the word. And finally, for me, Commissioner Wisdom. This is one actually kinda fade into my household this past week, I did a lot of talking to myself. One advantage of talking to yourself is that you know at least somebody's listening. And that's by...
Roger Bunton.
Franklin P. Jones, and Roger Bunton.
Thank you. Okay, I guess I'm just gonna piggyback on a couple other, uh, what some of the others said tonight. Arbor Day, we are Tree City USA again, and Mount Clemens has had Tree City USA for 30-some years or so, right? Am I right? 33rd?
30.
30. Oh, wow, see, I was right on it. So, uh, I just wanted to recognize that again, it says a lot for our DPS, uh, department who is, uh, in charge of, um, all of our parks and trees and what have you in the city, um, to get that designation again. Thank you to all the volunteers out there, for all the committees that you work on, for everything you do for the city. Without you, we couldn't do a lot of the things that we do for the city, the beautification, the historical commission, the planning commission, the Board of Zoning Appeals, all these people volunteer their time and effort, uh, for the city at no compensation to them, so I do truly appreciate their time and effort. Uh, the water and sewer crew, I stopped there yesterday, those guys were working all day long, and, uh, they were beat by 7 o'clock at night, and they were just, at that point, getting the piece that had to be fixed. And we have an old infrastructure, and unfortunately, um, this is probably the beginning of more, I hate to say that, but, um, we're gonna have to do a lot of work, especially in the Church Street area, so, please be, please bear with us, I know it's a major inconvenience, and I'm so sorry what happened to your basement. I do know they were there, and they did pump out what they could and help you, um, but I, we just need people to understand that we're doing the best we can with it, and, um, just have patience, please. With that, along the patience, downtown. I know it's a mess between what the county's doing and the grant that we received, the streets are torn up, um, it's difficult to get around, but please, please, if you can, make sure you go to the restaurants, you go to the businesses, they really need your help during this time that we're going through this, so, I encourage you to get downtown, there's, you can get through to the parking lots, you can have, the weather's wonderful, you can walk, good exercise, but please make sure you, um, go to our, go to the businesses downtown, they need your help at this point in time, and many of them will deliver lunches, the restaurants, they will deliver, so, if you're thinking of, I don't wanna go down there, but I'd like some call, and they will do that, but, um, please remember them during this time. And, um, this is kind of ironic, um, Lynn Moore's here tonight, and she's in the back, and I wanted to, um, if anybody had an opportunity during Easter to drive down South Wilson, and South Wilson's one of our largest blocks, streets, from, uh, church all the way, well, actually from, uh, Cass, oh, from church, it started at church if I'm not mistaken, all the way to Robertson or down that way, Lynn put Easter eggs on every lawn, I think there were three, maybe they didn't. Okay, she donated the flags, every lawn had a line of Easter eggs outlined throughout the whole block. And I received a phone call, I think it was the day that it was done, from Tony Ferlini, who was our, who was the representative for, um, St. Clair, uh, St. Clair Shore, no, I think Clinton, Trump, Macomb now, if I'm not mistaken, the rep, it's changed in Harrison. Anyway, he called me out of the blue, and he said, "Mayor, I just wanna tell you, I just wa- drove down South Wilson," and he said, "I couldn't believe what I saw." He said, "Eggs all over," he says, "if that isn't a community, I don't know what is." And, uh, so I was very pleased that he bothered to call me, I mean, he didn't have to, but he just said, "I just think that whoever did that, or if it's the community, whatever, it was just fantastic." So, I wanna recognize Lynn because she has done this, and...
She donated the flags for Independence Day.
Independence Day, they do the same thing with the flags, and I can't remember your name, help me out.
Helen.
Helen, I know where you live, Helen. I know you, I've met you before, so, thank you so much, but I think it's just, says a lot for our community, it really does, so thank you very much. And I think with that, I need a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Bunton.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Dempsey.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Krab.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.